Hi, everybody. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Sciop Township Board of Trustees. I'm Clerk Jessica Flinttoft. I'd like to first start by announcing that unexpectedly, our supervisor, facilitator of this meeting, Supervisor Carrie is unexpectedly absent, as is Trustee Kathy Knoll. We are expecting Trustee John Riser to arrive within the hour or so. Per the statute and rules of order, I'll facilitate this meeting as clerk until if and when the board makes a motion to appoint a facilitator at any time. I'd also like to announce for those of you at home that the cameras are set up a little differently, differently because we're having a problem. So this is the view that you will be looking at. Thank you, Kristy, for doing your best.
Sure.
And then I'd like to start out with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our and indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
A roll call. Supervisor Carrie is absent. Treasurer Yaple?
Present.
Flinttoft, present. Brandt?
Here.
Knoll is absent. Reed?
Here.
Riser, absent. We have Quorum also present is Township Attorney Mariah Fink and Office Coordinator Kristy Aiken. Next up is adoption of the agenda. Are there any proposed amendments to the agenda? I would suggest moving I-1 and I-7 from consent to the very top of new business. There are two minor changes to those. I think that would be the most efficient way to deal with those. Motion by Brandt. Is there a second? Support by Reed. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda is adopted as amended. Next up is the communications file, E-1. Are there any questions or comments?
Just one comment because I tweeted out, we've emailed a couple of members of the public about wash on materials planning. There's a meeting tomorrow. Unfortunately, I'm otherwise obligated with a commitment of fewer attempts to call. But if we do not participate, it ultimately would go to Eagle at the state level. If not enough local units participated in the process, something that I bring to the board in case who was interested or had time to attend tomorrow. There also is currently future meetings that are planned. Something maybe we can address in a future meeting.
Hey, Ryan, you're mumbling. Can you?
Am I mumbling?
Yeah, you're just mumbling.
Okay, so I was looking at everybody else.
Could you say that again, please?
Sure. So we received a couple of communications to the board as a whole from two different residents about a material planning meeting, specifically for waste management, not the waste management company, but where we landfill our refuse. And it was asked for the board to participate because if the board does not and enough local units of the county do not, the state ultimately decides for the county and enforces a plan. So I wanted to bring it to the board's attention so that should someone wish to participate or we appoint someone to participate, we have a voice in this matter. Yep.
Brian, do you recall what time the meeting is tomorrow?
It's at 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM tomorrow morning at the Learning Resource Center.
I could attend that.
Yeah, I could do it, too.
Okay.
Would you like to arm wrestle?
Not against you.
No. I don't mind doing it.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
And then I think we should probably take up more formally, maybe at the next meeting, who are ongoing rep will be at a future board meeting. Okay. Thanks for bringing that up, Brian.
Yep, thank you.
Next up is introductions and recognitions. I don't believe we have any tonight. Then we come to public comment. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to five minutes on any matter. Those of you here in person, please come forward. Hi, Rob.
Rob Pattinson, Sciop Township resident. I do not understand the hypocrisy of this board. Trustee Brandt, six months ago, you would have been on this side of the table representing fiscally responsible residents for Sciop and castigating the board for their poor decision-making for the HVAC system. You would have condemned the board for accepting the one $1.8 million quote that was nearly five times more expensive than the estimated cost of $390,000. Two weeks ago, you justified your decision based on the $1.3 million guesstimate of the very contractor that just quoted $1.8 million. When you sat on this side of the table, you never would have accepted that kind of fiscally irresponsible behavior from our board. Remember when we were all surprised last year at the outrageous estimate that the HVAC system could cost as much as $750,000? That was just a placeholder until the real estimate came in from the consultant. Even the cheaper amended estimate of $1.57 million is more than double the consultant's estimate. To the whole board, when you got only one quote, why didn't you widen out the bidding process to Detroit, to Jackson, to Lansing, to Toledo? Why did you accept the amended quote that plans to reuse the heat exchangers from the current system? Do you not understand that it was one of those three heat exchangers that failed earlier this winter? So you were going to base a $1.57 million project on the weakest part of the old system? How was that fiscally responsible? The past few weeks have shown that the federal government is unstable and the grants you are depending on very likely are not going to be available in a few months when you apply for them. We are on the precipice of another recession or worse. In such times, it is required that our local government be cautious when making plans. This $1.57 million HVAC system decision is not cautious and does not meet the requirement that you be careful with taxpayer dollars in a time of crisis. Clerk Flinttoft, a month ago, when I said I was certain you weren't talking about me when you said some residents are conflating issues and are misinformed. Clearly, from the look on your face when I said that, you were indeed talking about me. Trustee Brandt, two weeks ago, you said I was stating misinformation. I stand by everything I have said to this board. I would suggest to the both of you that you are free to disagree with what residents say to this board, but I highly recommend you don't tell residents they don't know what they're talking about. We just had four years of that, and I don't think you want to make yourselves look like fools and repeat the Hathaway gaslighting mistakes. The hypocrisy shown by this board is not what I voted for. Giving yourselves raises while denying the exact same raises to the seven new employees is just one example of that hypocrisy. Spending $1.57 million on the HVAC while refusing to pay $13,000 in COLA raises to the seven new employees shows that this board is penny wise and pound foolish. That kind of hypocrisy is corrosive and has already damaged the township by causing the IT director to quit and causing trustee Monk to quit. While this board has been focused on sabotaging a colleague, your actual responsibilities have fallen by the wayside. The dysfunction has damaged the finance director search, the salary study is delayed, created a hostile work environment, hindered the development of a noise ordinance, and diverted attention away from the HVAC decision-making process, just to name a few. I don't understand how we got here. This is literally the polar opposite of what I expected out of all of you. I am begging you to work this out. I would have begged Will Hathaway to work it out four years ago, and all I would have received is a blank stare in response. I know all of you have chosen to serve for the right reasons. I am begging you to get back on track and work together to serve the residents of Sciop Township with honor and integrity. You all have the ability to do so. Please choose to use it. Please choose to treat each other with dignity and respect. I say again that all of you need to work with the mediator. Every single one of you has your weaknesses. The way you strengthen a team, the way you strengthen your weaknesses is by working together and lending your strengths to your colleagues, by helping each other. I highly recommend that you guys get back on track and find a way to work it out.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Anyone else present wish to speak? If no one else present would like to speak, Kristy, do we have anyone on Zoom?
We do. We have Kathy Yaskevich first and followed by Jonathan Greymour. Kathy, did you want to speak? Okay. Jonathan Greymour, you're next, please.
Couple of observations. I'm curious as to why you guys are sitting up there again. I thought the whole idea was that we moved down to the chairs by the residents so we wouldn't set ourselves above them. Maybe I misunderstood, or maybe I did understand. The other thing I'd like to ask, a couple of months ago, Jessica, you started a meeting by announcing a 1980s horror show, a note that was left for you. And since that time, there have been a number of us who were publicly accused of being the potential recipients and you yourself said you didn't really want to talk to me until the investigation was over. So for the fact that this has been going on two months, has it been forgotten? Is it that Kathleen Brandt's dirty tricks just aren't worth following up on, or what? I don't know why you have attacked me. I don't know why your committee, after fulfilling my job as a compensation committee member, I was attacked by Kathleen Brandt multiple times publicly. Why people who I helped get elected stopped talking to me? Why people like you and Ryan and others just wrote me off as a sap of the supervisor? Somehow this sides that you guys have found me on the other side? I worked hard to get you all elected. I expected better of you. And now two months have gone by with relatives of people who work there accusing me publicly of leaving that note, hearing rumors that I'm part of the investigation, and then you confirming it by saying you don't want to talk to me until the investigation is over. Well, I sure hope the investigation's getting somewhere. And I sure hope you can wrap that up soon. And I sure hope you understand what your behavior has done to my faith in this local government.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at public comment? Please raise your Zoom hand. Paula? Go ahead, Paula.
Yeah, I'm not going to address all these other things, but I appreciate the work on the rules of order. And I actually enjoy all of you. Where, right now, the camera doesn't work that great, but I like people sitting in the front where I can see them. And I appreciate the work that's being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Anyone else like to speak at public comment? Please raise your Zoom hand. There are no hands raised.
Okay, moving on from public comment to H1, approval of the minutes of March 25th regular meeting. Are there any proposed corrections, or is there a motion to adopt the minutes as presented?
I don't have any changes. I would make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from the March 25th, 2025 regular meeting.
Motion by Brandt. Is there a second?
I would support.
Support by Yaple. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes are adopted as presented. Next up, our approval of the minutes of the March 28th special meeting. Are there corrections to the draft minutes, or is there a motion to approve as presented?
I would approve the minutes of March 28th, 2025 as presented.
Motion by Yaple. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brandt. All in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Minutes are adopted as presented. Next up is the amended consent agenda. It's as presented minus I-1 and I-7. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended?
Ooh.
Moved by Reed. Is there a second?
I'll second.
The second by Brandt. This will be a roll call vote. Per our rules of order tonight, we're starting with Reed. Reed. Right, excuse me. Reed, yes. Yaple?
Yes.
Flinttoft, yes. Brandt?
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted 4-0. Moving on to reports, J1. First, these are the regular reports from the officers, departments, and committees. Enclosed, there's two written reports. One is the list of upcoming, or just one written report, the list of upcoming proposed agenda items for regular board meetings. Are there, is there any report from the DDA or the treasurer?
It's happened. There was a DDA meeting almost four weeks ago. There'll be another DDA meeting in May. Nothing new on the DDA at this point in time. The I've worked with Bank of Ann Arbor. We actually had a meeting yesterday. One of the things we did discover was the DDA had been receiving almost 4.2% as an interest rate on its checking account. It was discovered that that was set manually at the branch, and because it was set at the branch, there was no expiration date put to it, but it is no longer a valid rate that the bank is offering. We are going to be using a new bank product that they, the DDA's actually used it for a couple of years to get a better interest rate on our general fund and our pooled accounts, which include the water and sewer fund. I should have some more information about that here by the next meeting. I just received the initial information late this afternoon, but working on settlement for the taxes for the last tax season, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Brief update. For me, we're starting audit prep with Raymond, our auditor. We had an internal launch meeting. We're planning to have them onsite the first two weeks of June and have them present to the board in August for submission by September 30th. The May 6 election is humming along. Thanks to everybody who's already voted. To our election inspectors, to our election commission, our supervisor and treasurer convened last week, and we did the public accuracy test. And that's proceeding on track. As well, there was a Lockalpine Sanitary Authority meeting last night. I missed it. Supervisor Carrie and Treasurer Yaple were there. And then any other updates from Parks Paths, LPC, or Planning Commission?
Yes, for the Planning Commission, we met last night. We had further discussion. There was no applicants for any development. We had further discussion on the solar ordinance accessory, solar. Specifically, this would be ground mounted. There was consensus to have a minor decrease in setback, a 10-foot encroachment. Our planners can work on that language. We also discussed bylaw changes which are about conflict of interest. That's not finalized. The Planning Commission would like to be in alignment with the Board of Trustees on what our policies are. And then finally, we discussed potential landscape ordinance changes. The result is that we're going to make a robust list of invasive species that we would share with developers to try to discourage those components.
Great.
Quick question. Regarding solar, you pull out specifically ground mount.
Right.
What about roof mount?
No changes necessary for roof mount. The ground mount, there's been a couple of requests in the past, I don't know how many years, to have less than the established setback. So 50 feet on A1, 35 feet for R1. So we talked about having a 10-foot encroachment into that setback. It's not finalized yet.
Great. And then?
LPC met
Thank you.
Four weeks ago, I think. And it's been a while. I, biggest topic we talked about was the lack of payments from the federal government for the farmers who planted cover crops two years ago. And this amounts to tens of thousands of dollars for these guys, or these folks. So they're hung out to dry on that, though hopefully something will happen soon, positively, hopefully. But that's about, and of course, they talked about the Van Kurler burn, but I think that's also Murphy's report, so.
Great. Thank you, David. We'll wait for a Gellman update until trustee Knoll returns. Any update on township lobbying efforts? Roads Advisory Committee, we wait for an update for the supervisor to return. And I would just ask, Kristy, do we have any, do you have any report tonight, anything to announce?
Well, we've got one of the older utility trucks back on the road for assessing and code enforcement, so that was nice to see. Happy about that.
So does that save us some money, Kristy?
It should, yes.
Good.
Yeah, making departments happy. They can jump into a working vehicle and get some work done, so.
Great. Way to go.
Which vehicle is that? Is that the 2009?
Yeah.
I saw that on the bills.
Great. Okay, moving on. Chris Chang, project manager here for his quarterly report. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Chris Chang. I'm the project manager. For those at home who are watching, you may not know me, but I think the Board of Trustees know I am. I think I just celebrated a little over a year, so my year anniversary here at the township.
Awesome. Thanks for being here.
Made it. Okay, so in your packet, I did give a general list of, or a summary of all of the projects that I'm working on up to date. So feel free, if you have questions as I'm going through it, if you need more detail, or you'd like me to summarize it even further, let me know. But let me start with the first item. Let's see, so Prepared Monthly PPP, which is the Parks Pathways and Preserves agendas, along with running the Zoom meeting. I attend these meetings there on the second Wednesday and the second Thursday at each month. So for those at home or board members, we do have PPP tomorrow night at 4 o'clock, and the LPC, again, on Thursday night at 4 o'clock. During this, I coordinate with OH. I've been coordinating with OHM, who's our consultant, on the Z Road F5 layout, which is moving along. Scheduled meetings with, I call it sweepsters, the old sweepster site. They've been nothing but cooperative, so I have to say a big shout out to them. A big thank you for the easement, for the Z Road Phase 5 connection to the Border to Border Trail. We still have another meeting coming up with crossing the railroad. That could take some time, as I've been told. We did complete the Van Kurler parking lot, and we are working on future improvements to Township Hall Park. I can get into that a little later. But that's an easy one. If you were to go out and take a look right now, we even put up one of the climbing structures today. So that's been set in cement. You can see the sandbox end. The Eagle Scouts doing a great job, but like I said, I can expand on that one a little further down on the list. I've been helping coordinate volunteer workdays. Again, this is with the Parks Director, with nest boxes and invasive species removal. I've also been attending Michigan Vernal Pool Training and the Butterfly Annual Meetings. This is again at the direction of our Parks Director, and I am learning about frogs, frog sounds in vernal pools that I never thought I'd know, but I had to get a little bit of a background in it, which is a lot of fun. I've been preparing monthly financial reports for the LPC that are included in the packet. Again, running with the Zoom meeting. Same with the RAC. I've been attending some of the RAC meetings kind of as needed basis, and those are on the first Wednesday of each month. I've been assisting with the Parks Department and Preserve, which was previously mentioned, with the Township Hall Park. I believe we just approved on our consent packet that the ADA pathway was approved, so that's great. We've been working with OHM to get that taken care of, so we're going to see that completed, I think, I'm hoping, before the summer ends. We've done the clearing for the natural play structure. That's the Eagle Scout project out there. I worked with Brandon today, and I think in the next two weeks, I think his portion of the active play space is going to be completed. So that's moving along quite well. Assisted with the Van Kurler burn break, and that has been completed. If you get a chance to look at the Sciop newsletter, there's a QR code. I'd say take a look. It's really worth watching. Special thanks goes out to Matt Donakowski, who works with utilities, who actually took his drone out there and took aerial footage of the actual burns. So that's really worth watching. Inspecting the parks and preserves to comply with maintenance. We don't have any stewards at the moment, but I'm guessing in the next month we will. So I've been going out and trying to make sure that the parks are either clean and the garbage is picked up and taken care of. We've installed bird boxes, cameras, already mentioned the vernal pool and frog calling monitoring training. So in fact, if you take a look at the fire station, the Purple Martin birdhouse has been installed. Again, really worth taking a look at. Did a really nice job with that. Been helping out with getting supply inventory and purchase for playground installation, whether it's quickcrete rebar, you know, treated wood, whatever the Eagle Scout needs or projects that are out there, so he can continue to make progress. I've been writing articles for the Sciop newsletter, recent article regarding all of the projects we've done and where they stand with the Parks Department. I've been assisting with the zoning inquiries and site compliance inspections, and I've, you know, this is kind of the same. This is kind of holdover from the last time, hovering out the front counter with zoning compliance and general zoning questions, site inspections. So there's compliance for issuance of final certificates of occupancy. If there's any zoning code enforcement, I've been assisting with our new zoning enforcement officer. But this is also going to expand, and I'm sure there'll be more detail. It's my understanding that I will be assisting with more planning and zoning, as we have an employee that may be taking off for some time. So I'll be a lot more planning and zoning upfront. So that role will expand in the next week or two, I think, for the next, maybe four to six weeks. Township Hall Geothermal, which was just mentioned a little bit early in the public comment. I think you're all pretty well aware of what's going on with the HVAC system. We did value engineer it. Mariah, I sent you over the letter of intent to keep this one moving forward, so that's where we're at with the next steps to get Boon and Dar, who's the contractor, to move forward. We've created a timeline on the HVAC work schedule, and I'll present that as I get for the next steps, as we move forward after the letter of intent. I have a general idea of where we stand as far as when employees are about to probably be shifted and when they're going to come in and start ordering equipment. But we're kind of at a standstill until I get that letter of intent, you know, submitted to Boon and Dar. So that's where I was with the HVAC. I know I'm going fairly quickly. Anybody have any questions so far with any of this that I've given? Okay, next page. Let's see. Been managing the Jackson Road Complete Streets corridor study. Been great. This is with OHM. They've been keeping us on track. We meet every other week. Recently, we just had a pop-up meeting that was out at, let's see, with Cohousing, but we have a couple more scheduled with Myers, and I believe there's one, don't quote me, but I believe there's one on the 17th. It's going to be out at Sciop Farms. So we're soliciting feedback from residents on what they want to see the direction of the Jackson Road corridor. Reminder to everybody out there, if you're listening, please take the survey. We have a survey up on our website. Park Road Connection, we have met out onsite. We've met with foresters to determine the least impact on landmark trees for a future path. This would be on the north side of the road. I'm sad to report at this time, it looks like a lot of trees will not be saved. The road commission is, it's kind of standard practice that for safety issues, and a lot of those landmark trees may have to be removed, but it's ongoing. So it's not a done deal yet, but that's
Is that along Park Road?
Yes. Yep. Yep. Future park road improvements. Also coordinating with the PPP on getting a future pathway connecting to existing park road pathway. This is more out towards Stabler, Stabler Road out there where they have the culvert. Whatever that subdivision is over there, if we can possibly get a sidewalk connection to complete that out there. That's something that's on the PPP agenda tomorrow evening. The Sciowagner Barn re-roof, I've met onsite. I think, again, this is on the last meeting, so we kind of know where that one stands. If we want to re-roof it, I'm happy to solicit more bids on that one, but it sounds like at this time, we're going to use the barn probably for township storage, so. Summer sustainability intern?
Chris, before we move on, I'm interested in seeing I'm interested in seeing the bids for re-roofing.
Yeah, I can pull those out, they, we had several of them, I know they ranged depending, we had, I think between twenty-five and forty thousand dollars. I will tell you, I believe there was a lady at the last public.
Carol Fletcher.
Carol Fletcher, you're right, it was Carol, I did contact Carol Fletcher uh and she gave me the lowdown on if we were to actually seek the the Amish to actually do the re-roofing, but it was really kind of fascinating when Carol sent the email is they don't work with the contract, it's a handshake deal with them. Uh there may be employees or Amish who are under eighteen years of age that may be on the roof doing the work. Um there was a lot of other issues with it that make it sound like I don't think we can go in the direction of hire the Amish because one, I can't even really contact them, I have to call somebody who knows them that would then get in contact with them to to do to do a handshake deal, so um I don't think that's the direct, if I'm told otherwise, but I think there's liability issues with with going with a handshake deal to to re-roof it.
I I would be interested in contacting them myself, I think some of these issues are surmountable. You could have agreements that they don't have underage. Um we can have agreements on um insurance minimum liabilities. Um what does the board think about that?
I I think that's an option, the other thing I was thinking of is there's different without trying to go too far into a rabbit hole, different uh versions of or variations on the Amish faith, there's also Mennonites which aren't truly Amish, they're sort of a different group of people that split off over time who are a bit more modern, they use some electricity, some tools, whereas the Amish don't use any electricity, so maybe that's an option, I I don't know. Um just as a thought, as I was listening to some of the concerns you brought up. I still think it's worth exploring, we still might run into some of the issues that you brought up about age of labor, contracts, et cetera.
Yeah, that's would have to be explored a little further and I will absolutely talk a little bit in further detail with the Township Attorney with Mariah, if if necessary, if we want to pursue that avenue.
I agree with my colleagues, but also didn't, was one of the bids for a metal roof?
Yes, it was.
That would be, in my opinion, that would be preferable, but I'm not, I'm not sure the Amish would want to do that.
No, I think, I believe they do that.
Oh, they do that, okay, good.
I have done some research, uh there's a number of people in the Charlotte area that do roofing. So I did put an option on the table to have me discuss with uh any of these people. Is that something the board would like to pursue?
Sure, yeah, I think, I think that's great, and just stay coordinated with Chris.
And I think Kathleen is right, they do do metal roofs, that was one of the things Carol mentioned.
All right, well, we'll look into it a little further then.
So Chris, let's coordinate with that, and I'll give you my cell phone number.
Okay, please do, please do. Uh the Summer Sustainability Intern, I've been in contact with them, I'm thinking we're gonna have somebody on board soon that will prepare a report mostly not just for SIO Township, but for local units of government and uh you know, on how we can uh better create sustainable, sustainable buildings.
Is this different than the natural area technicians?
Yes, very much so, the natural area technicians will be under the Parks Department purview and they're going to be doing more of the maintenance and what, you know, invasive species, you know, things of that nature, it will not have, this will be completely separate then with the um the Sustainability Intern.
Where, who and or where is the funding coming from for this intern position?
Not from the township, I don't think they're gonna be, yes.
That's why it wasn't an authorized position, and I believe this is something maybe Jan pulled together for ESTF.
It was originally supposed to be just for SIO Township, but we've got somebody who would want, who's looking at, like, there was applications submitted by, I think they're graduate students that was so similar to, say, Lansing or other government units, it's like, why don't we all work together as government agencies and have this Sustainability Intern do it just more of a a general outline and how to create more of a sustainable uh buildings for for government, for government buildings, so. Uh let's see, grants, still keeping up to date with our MEDC grants, this is for the Z Road, Park Road. Uh we also have the SMCAG uh grant for planning, I'm sorry, for for the Jackson Road Corridor Study, so we have to give reports to those. And then finally, the Popkin Cemetery, I believe we're going out uh this Thursday for another BD, but we have a uh you know, the ceremony is.
May eighteenth.
Thank you, May eighteenth, so we'll have that to hopefully address to, you know, to honor a revolution, a revolution, a Revolutionary War veteran, Sylvester Richmond, so. That's kind of the update, I'm sure I'm missing some stuff, but feel free to ask me any questions.
Thank you, Chris, I just, I just had one kind of question, flag. It's more for awareness for the board too, is with the two MEDC grants we have, I know that you're on top of it, um Jillian's on top of it. I just want to flag, given with all the economic uncertainty, we want to make sure to spend that money. Um if we can, if we remember some of the awkwardness of how those grants were structured. Um part of it is for the remainder of the Z Road pathway, which will, we will be able to expend once all the approvals go through um for sweepsters and the row road. But the other part is for Park Road. And I really want to make sure that we're all, you know, moving forward on Park Road in some way, shape or form, and if we can't move forward on Park Road, um let's just deliberate and figure that out, so I know the Roads Committee, Roads Committee's looking at that. I think that the problem that we acknowledged in the capital improvement plan is we have, you know, a third or a half of the money that we need, we don't have all the money we need, so then, could we do the rest through an SAD, I've been advised um by Jillian that we can't. Um so then what are the other options um for identifying that funding to get that portion paved? So I don't have any um, you know, particular question, I just want to flag it that if we don't spend this money, um those were Democratic earmarks from a year and a half ago. Um those will become targets soon, I think if the politics and and economy continue in the same direction.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate your being here, Chris.
Uh thanks for having me.
All right, new business, um first up, we have added the payment of the bills, I pulled it from consent because I just wanted to um add one um item to the proposed claims for payment of tomorrow, an item for thirty-four thousand sixty dollars and fourteen cents from the General Fund Department Two Six Five payable to DTE um for the alteration of gas service. I would like to add that, this was authorized at the last meeting, the reason I'd like to add it to the top of payment for the bills is because Christie and Brandon have advised us that we actually need to have the check for them tomorrow, we need to pay them upfront before DTE will um do the work. So that is a proposed amendment to the proposed claims for payment, and with that amendment, I would make the model motion. Motion by Flintoff, support by Reed. Uh we're gonna do roll call vote, because this has to do with money, starting with Reed. Yaple?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Brandt?
Yes.
Payment of the bills adopted, four zero, thank you, next up is the workstations. Christie?
Yes, so this is um a proposal for new workspace in the front of the office. It will seat six people, or currently there is three. So it will give us an extra person upfront and then extra space for temporary election staff during election time. Um we had the quote, the initial quote was for twenty-five, I've got it right, find it in there here. It was for just over twenty-five thousand, and then we were notified towards the end of last week that with the tariffs that there was gonna be an increase. So this was after the agenda was published and I got the quote later this afternoon and I printed it off for the board. It'll be a, if the board approves it, it would be a one thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollar thirteen cent increase. Uh if they approve the the new office layout for the front. And then we hope to reuse what is currently there. If we can find space in the building, I think we can, we just haven't uh looked into it that far to reuse what we currently have, because it's usable, we just need to make smaller space for more bodies up front to be able to have more people available to work the front counter.
Hmm, great. I just want to comment, Christie, you've done a great job of consulting with everybody internally who needs to be consulted and to make sure we can have a lot of functions at our single front counter.
Yeah, and Christie, we did, of course, try to measure several different areas of the office to see different pieces and different fits. I think we still have some more work to do in that regard, but I mean, we have begun and I think we will continue as if this moves forward, figuring out what we can do with the piece that we have.
It's still very usable.
Yeah, so, and it'll also allow us, this this space is enough, we're not going to outgrow this space anytime soon with the new configuration, so thank you for that. Okay, so, yes.
Do we need a motion?
A motion, is there a motion to approve the model motion as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brandt, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Yaple. Roll call vote, Reed? Riser?
Yes.
Yaple?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Brandt?
Yes.
Motion adopted, five zero. Next up is L one, to authorize the purchase of a utility department work truck. I see there are two um options here, are there comments by the board? Or questions for Brandon?
Hi, Brandon.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, Brandon.
I would be in favor of purchasing the electric truck. And I talked to my neighbor, who is a president of Ford Racing. And he said, if you're gonna buy it, buy it quick because of the tariffs, they make the truck in the United States, but there are parts that come from overseas. So if you're gonna buy it, buy it now, this is a very, he said this was a good deal, so. I wouldn't know, but he works for Ford, so he should know.
Thank you, David, Kathleen?
I have researched the electric vehicle quite extensively. I have confirmed that the township is eligible eligible for the seven, the seven thousand five hundred dollar federal rebate. One thing that we should look into, Ford is currently running a promotion uh offering the public their employee pricing, they call it Plan A. Uh I'm familiar with that, my brother worked for Ford, I used to buy those vehicles. Have no idea if that's available for uh the township, but it's something we should I believe, ask about just to verify. And another thing, um you list the model XLT, I've researched commercial vehicles, Ford has a program called Ford Pro uh where they offer the Pro version, which is slightly cheaper. It has all the components that the XLT has. Um it also has the ability to put in a camera on the windshield, which gives visibility for the driver as well as the road, it's a bi-directional camera. Um for, I think it was pretty inexpensive, uh it comes with the GPS, it comes with a a modem, they have software that you can evaluate the the vehicle that they provide. Varsity Ford is a dealer for the commercial um segment, the the um Ford Pro program. So I would ask that we at least check that out to see if there is any savings. I was seeing pricing of fifty-seven thousand for the uh the Lightning Pro. Or fifteen, up to fifty-nine, they're pretty pretty standard. I also found lots of these vehicles on dealer websites. Um which should be available if we talk to Varsity through Dealer Trades. Uh you'll see a lot of these dealers have a lot of vehicles listed, they don't necessarily have that inventory, but they do, they do go through Dealer Trades, that they can get that, so uh I've I've seen, in in your preferred color, right?
Well, if we can, if not, it's no big deal.
Yeah, so they they did have a number of those in the light the XLT model.
So if.
I appreciate that, because I didn't know they sold the, in the Pro model version, the full electric, so that's, I appreciate that.
I took notes of what she said, so I think I'm sure about.
Are there any other comments from board members?
I would be supportive of what my other board member said.
Okay, I have one question for you, Brandon, I'm um sort of supportive of of the electric, but with one caveat. Um you know, the gas you state is suitable for utility, for utility needs. Under electric, you don't have such a statement, can you speak to that?
Yeah, so um just throughout my career, uh of course, and things have changed, uh gas has been the premier choice, a- as well as diesel. It's um it's just the more comfortable choice, because you know exactly what you're gonna get out of it. Um and so that's the reason why I labeled it that way. Um what I envisioning doing if if we move forward with the electric truck at first is to use the twenty-twenty-four um utility truck that I bought for my purpose is to have the utility techs use that one. And then um I would use the electric vehicle if that was chosen and and see how that worked um for a a certain amount of time. And then if we want to get more use out of it, um and save on some gas, um you know, we could, we could put it back in the fleet and I could take the gas one back. Um however, the board would like to see that done. I feel like uh the electric is gonna work out for the township. Uh I'm only apprehensive, apprehensive of it i- in bad weather or bad cold weather conditions, I've just read a lot about how how they don't charge very good, but for the s- for the setup that we have right now, it it should be charged internally in our garage, which is heated. So that's gonna be fine, I just don't know how well it's gonna perform if it's outside and we have to stay overnight or stay out there extended periods of time. Um how well it's gonna hold up, you know, to to the amount of usage we can have for that given day. So it's it's just a a little period of of trying to figure out how well it works in our situation, but I feel like um for the work that we do and uh the amount of distance that we drive, it it should, it should be fine.
Do you have mileage records?
Um I don't have them broken down yearly, but I I have a good idea, I think we typically drive anywhere from five to eight thousand miles a year per vehicle um for the field techs themselves. Right now, I uh it's a, it's been a year for my personal utility truck that I use and it has twenty-five hundred miles on it. So less, of course. So I I think that's about right where we're at with our typical mileage uses per year.
Yeah, the the Ford Lightning is rated at two hundred and sixty miles per charge. Um I would be surprised if you use more than that, I have a hybrid. Um I get thirty to thirty-six per charge. I basically run that around town and never put gas in for local. I would encourage you to start using it right away, because the benefit is to using electric um using the time of uh day rate structure where you're basically charging at night, that's programmable.
Well, it sounds like there's, you know, a consensus about the electric, David, one more comment, and I'll ask for a motion.
Add to your, no, I'll I'll do that. Or option two, you say potential long saves, long-term savings on fuel, also oil changes. And I'm assuming they have the um the um recharging when you um back off on the pedal.
Yeah.
Regenerative, so, and so that that actually saves on brakes. Because, so um there's a lot more savings than just gas.
I completely agree.
So, but um but you're right about cold. The range isn't as long, but Township is only six miles wide and six miles, so hopefully you don't, you won't take.
It's very small circumstances where we'll be out in the cold with that specific truck for extended period of times, I agree.
Yeah, read the room, we want electric.
So is there a motion for option two?
No, it's like, are we really gonna trickle charge it, or are we gonna get a?
No, he's, he he mentions he's got a level two, level two charger.
Correct, yup, it for like, I think it was like additional five hundred dollars or something like that, and purchase the charger with it, and then I'm still. charger with it. And then I'm still in talks with Christie, um, on, on seeing if we want to put an actual um, charging station out here for potential, um, personal or township employee use slash, uh, public use or somewhere in between there.
That's tricky because those are, um, they're metered and it would be tricky for us to manage township use if we have a bay that we can park this in every night and charge.
Right.
And that is what's being proposed.
Yeah, and there, there is a rebate from DTE for five hundred dollars for the charging unit. Okay, that's another advantage.
Is there, so
All I was gonna say, it sounds like the full electric is, is the way that we're proposing to go. And there seems like there's a lot of rebates and, and things like that that I could pursue.
We'll go for all of them.
Right, and then, absolutely, but, um, what I can do is just make sure that before, of course, the vehicle is purchased, I know you guys would be authori- potentially authorizing the price tonight. But I'll make sure I get all the information, what we're gonna be getting, uh, to Christie and she could um, pass that information to the board and that way, I mean, if you guys want me to come back to the board, but if not, Christie could pass the information along and get like, you guys are happy with it type situation to move along with the purchase.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the instruction from the board, if I could suggest, is just for Christie um, and Brandon to work together to get the best possible price, um, with, and go for every possible, um, rebate with all of the ideas on the table. I would ask if a board member has a motion for option two.
I would move to authorize the purchase of the utility department electric work truck.
As set forth in option two?
As set forth in option two.
Support by Riser.
Motion by Reed, support by Riser. Roll call, Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Yapo?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Brandt?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, board.
Hang tight here, Brandon. L two. Authorize O H M to update the water system master plan and A W I A, R R A, and E R P documents.
And I do have Sally here with us, um, if there's some more technical questions.
Um, I will just say, I touched base with you earlier today. Um, I want to clarify, I'm with Sally on the phone and in public. Um, I was concerned about the inclusion of Task Seven Capital Improvement Plan for a price of eighty-seven hundred dollars since we just did our capital improvement plan. Um, Brandon, um, explained to me that this would just be the authorization for them to assist in next year's C I P as they've done before. They have assisted with the C I P in years past under general services. This would just kind of make it more explicit as needed, but it wouldn't be duplicative and it would be in line with our annual planning process.
If during this water reliability, uh, update, um, and there's many things that go along with it, if they find something from doing that work that, um, they believe should be a recommendation to me and the board in order for us to improve something or prepare for something, um, then that would be, um, part of what they would be helping us with, with the C I P plan next year. Is that correct, Sally?
Yes, it's also a Eagle requirement that you have a capital improvements plan along with this document. So this is water specific. We look at both five-year and twenty-year improvements, and that is an Eagle requirement to do. So we have to do it regardless. Um, it is not duplicative of the effort we do with the C I P because we can use the information we have here and bring that over to yours. So like Brandon said, it's going to help us with next year's as well, but as part of this report and general plan and the S management plan, Eagle requires that you have a water-specific capital improvements plan in the document.
Thank you, Sally.
So I understand this plan is required by Eagle every five years?
Correct.
I was looking on the webpage. Do we have the prior report? Which for, it should forecast twenty years, right? I would, do we have that prior report that we can look at?
Yes, it is in Brandon's files. Um, due to the how do I want to put this? Due to the sensitivity of some of the information in there, it's not generally publicly posted, but it is available if you want to go talk to Brandon. And we can pull that report for you as well.
Yeah, I think it would be useful to look at a comparison from what happened five years projected into twenty years to see how we're tracking.
And that is exactly part of what we And that is exactly part of this program is to take what we did the last time, update it with what has happened since, and then compare the results and project the next five and the next twenty years.
Right. Any other comments or questions from the board? Is there a motion?
I'll move the motion to authorize O H M to update the water system master plan and A W I A, R R A, and E R P documents.
Is your limit on the amount not to exceed, or you want to leave that out? Because would you accept a friendly amendment, uh, in the amount not to exceed ninety-seven thousand, two hundred dollars from Water Fund five nine one dash zero 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 to H twenty-one?
That is in the model motion.
Yeah, but he didn't say.
I didn't read the model motion.
Oh, I get it.
I accept that.
Is there a second? We have a motion by Reed. Is there a second?
Right.
Okay, a friendly amendment and a friendly second by Riser. Roll call vote, Reed?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Yapo?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Brandt?
Yes.
Motion adopted, five zero. Thanks, Brandon.
Absolutely, thank you.
Aurora, you are up.
Hi, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon.
Have a good night.
Next up, we have a discussion-only item. Um, implementation of an employee evaluation review form and process for non-union employees. A lot of work has gone into this. Thank you for being here, Aurora. And Aurora, can you, um, give us a brief overview of the process and what we should achieve tonight in this discussion?
Sure. So, um, for discussion is the employee evaluation review form initially for review period with the department head and the employees, um, for a time period of six months. And, um, I have already introduced the form. There will be additional training. Any support that the, um, department head or employees need in terms of completing the document. Um, I would suggest no more than five tasks and responsibilities. Um, there's an acronym there, there that some of you may be familiar with, um, called SMART. So, um, the goals and tasks just need to be specific, measurable, attainable, relevant to the role and time-bound. Um, in other words, have a, uh, scheduled, um, completion deadline. The process is, um, not tied to an increase, a pay increase. It is just primarily to, um, evaluate the, um, the employee along with the employee having discussions with the department head regarding the task and the deadline. So this is a collaborative effort. And, um, the time deadline is agreed to. And I am suggesting either weekly or bi-weekly meeting depending on the comfort level. Um, so this will also increase communication between the department head and the employees.
Wonderful. Um, comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, I have some comments. Um, I would anticipate that, um, uh, department heads will need some assistance, guidance on coming up with the tasks and responsibilities. Um, so is that, I'm assuming that's part of your process?
Yes, absolutely.
And, um, also could we, um, lean on, um, our office coordinator to assist with that also as well?
Yes, absolutely. Because obviously, um, we would need the help of the department head in terms of what they feel are the tasks that are most critical, um, that have a deadline that can be tied to that task. So absolutely. You personally.
And, uh, one process point, a, a kind of point of order question. This is presented on our agenda as discussion only, but also here is a potential model motion. Were you wanting the board to, um, take action to approve this tonight?
Yes, if, if there aren't any further discussions, um, or I could come back if you feel need to review.
I mean, I, I would be comfortable with.
I would be comfortable with, uh, moving, moving this forward. I know that Aurora has come to one of our internal uh, management meetings where we meet with all the department heads. Uh, I think maybe one or two people weren't able to be there because of, uh, paid time off or other circumstances, but I'm sure as we talked about, we'll have additional meetings with everyone, maybe one-on-one meetings with several people as they have questions. So I would be supportive of moving this forward. Aurora's done a great job in getting us ready and getting, uh, this prepared so that we, we do this as an organization. We've never uh, had the ability to give employees more formal feedback. Of course, we can talk to people, but.
Excellent. David?
I had a brief conversation with Aurora a couple of days ago. And I thanked her for moving this forward. I tried to do this when I was on the board. I don't know, ten years ago. And so thank you for doing this. And I also suggested that, and I think she, she thought it was already built into it, that the A of SMART not only stands for attainable, but also adjustable. Because some folks may come up with a task that's either unattainable in their particular, um, universe or way too easy. So as you go through these monthly or semi-monthly meetings, you can see the person's either drowning or is nearly complete after six months. You need to adjust that task. So, um, I think, I think, yeah, right, okay.
Correct.
But yes, I'm supportive. This is, thank you.
Yes.
Welcome. Thank you.
And, and I just want to say the support on this board is in, and with the management, Aurora, Christie, it's, I think, reflective of some of the improvement in the culture and the focus on professionalizing in SIO. So thank you for your work on this. This is a big step forward. Is there further discussion or would somebody like to make the motion?
I'd like to make the motion because this was one of my tasks. So I get to check this off. Um, one of my tasks to do.
Motion by Brandt, is there a second? Second by Riser?
To approve the attached employee evaluation rev- review form with an initial review period of July first, twenty-twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Thank you, Aurora.
All right, motion by Brandt, support by Riser. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion adopted. Thank you, Aurora. Next up is L four, appointment of member of Board of Trustees to the Land Preservation Commission.
I move to appoint David Reed to serve as the Board of Trustees' Member of the Land Preservation Commission and to serve out the remainder of the one-year term ending eleven, twenty, twenty-twenty-five.
Support? So we have a motion by Riser, support by Flintoff. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? The ayes have it. Um, David Reed is appointed as the board seat to the L P C. We now have a vacancy in the L P C, uh, committee, uh, community vacancy, and that is being advertised through the newsletter and other channels.
You said L P C or P P P?
L P C.
Okay.
Next up is L five. L five, appointment of member of Board of Trustees to the Parks, Preserves, and Pathways Committee. John?
I have that different. I'm gonna move it, but they both say L P C, so I'll substitute the word.
So I, I want to, um, apologize. Um, when I first published and then I republished, I had an error. And so, um, the model motion for the P P P would be this to appoint whomever, um, I'm recommending David Reed, but whoever we recommend to appoint to serve as Board of Trustees' Member on the Parks, Preserves, and Pathways Committee and to serve the remainder of a two-year term ending eleven, twenty, twenty-six.
Okay, I, I, I had the printed version, my apologies. I move to appoint David Reed to serve as the Board of Trustees' Member on the Parks, Preserves, and Pathways Committee and to serve out the remainder of the two-year term ending November twentieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, motion by Riser, is there a second?
I have the support.
Support by Yapo. Any discussion on the motion on the table? It is, um, it is a, a two-year term. Board members are for the length of their term. Your term as an appointee ends eleven, twenty, twenty-six. Okay. All right, um, all in favor of the appointment of David Reed, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Next up, um, is L six. It's to discuss the committee recommended revisions to the rules of order of the Board of Trustees. Uh, this was, uh, my item I, I brought. I want to remind the board that they established a committee on December seventeenth. I want to thank the supervisor, Supervisor Carrie, Office Coordinator Christie, um, myself, um, our township attorney, uh, Mariah Fink, and trustee, um, Kathleen Brandt. I want to note, um, my error in the background. I've omitted trustee Barrant's name. Sorry about that. Um, we all worked well. We met four times, went through the rules in a structured way to identify some improvements. Um, I would just remind ourselves, this would be rules two-point-oh for SIO. So some improvements, um, still in perfection. And we kind of got to the point, um, where I thought it'd be helpful for the board to discuss these. Um, and I'd like to suggest that we kind of discuss these deeply enough to identify where they need new work, more work, and then either send them back to one or more individuals or the committee to bring a final copy back to the board. We'll just kind of see how much input there is, but the committee didn't want to go much further with these until we got some input from the board on some, um, major topics. Is that fair?
That, that makes sense. Quick, Flintoff, did I see the top of the markup version? It starts at two-point-five with the sentence ahead. I think, actually. You were beginning there.
Oh, Mariah.
I, yeah.
What, is it supposed to start at one? Okay.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I was struggling with this document. I think we just need to retype it. So my apologies. Let me, um, I do think it's helpful to look at, um, the redline version, and I can describe, um, if you, if you flip back and forth, um, to the clean version and the redline version. I would just, um, summarize for the board, uh, rule one is simply the authority for the rules. Rule two starts at two-point-one. Um, and so if the board would be so kind to look at the clean copy meetings, we can talk about rule two there if you have any comments. There's two-point-one regular meeting schedule, special meetings, work session, place of meetings, cancellation of meetings, attendance by board members and quorum, attendance. So it's two-point-one through two-point-seven. Did board members have any comments or questions substantive issues related to all of rule two? I think we made some good improvements for clarity. Okay, um, rule three, and then you can go to the, back to the redline. Um, the public notice of meetings and proposed agenda preparation and distribution. Again, it, um, kind of codifies the, you know, open agenda. Anybody can put something on the agenda as long as it's, uh, fully prepared with a descriptive title. Certainly, if the board were to adopt the rules, I would kind of redo the proposed cover sheet so it can have, you know, more elements or different pieces of information. At the supervisor's request, suggest, at the supervisor's suggestion, um, the committee is recommending that the township board designate in writing a person who would prepare the proposed agenda. In these prior rules, we had sort of the odd thing of it being the dual responsibility of the administrator and the supervisor instead of one person. Any comments on rule three? Okay, rule four?
Should we, should we discuss the designate?
I think we, we can if you wish. I would imagine it's not relevant to discuss it until we would adopt these rules. Because right now, these aren't our rules.
Okay.
But certainly the committee was recommending the word person because it could be, you know, an officer, staff. A member of the public, any person. It was open. Rule four. Uh, there's a, a change here, timing for submission. Um, Christie, do you want to comment on the intention of changing the time and also the preliminary feedback you got at the management meeting?
Happy to. So currently, agenda items are due by twelve noon on Wednesday before the next board meeting. And that will give who's ever preparing the agenda time to clean it up, get it ready, to publish on Thursday by five o'clock. I, that's, I don't know if that's in there, but um it was discussed to have the deadline be the Monday before instead of Wednesday. So two days prior, I brought it up at the management meeting. And then the immediate feedback was hmm not good. The uh department heads felt that they would be rushed since basically, yes, we have a board meeting, and then in two days, they would be finishing up the items that they just got approved, getting things buttoned up, and then scrambling to get their agenda items prepared by five, four o'clock on Monday. So they weren't too happy about it. I'm sure we can figure out how to make it work if that's what the board wanted to do, but they felt that Wednesday was a better timeframe to get things turned in and basically, it's going to be up to the board to decide how soon do they want a fully prepared packet to review.
And I think
Prior to a meeting.
What, what I've observed too is I think part of that is work planning. Like, I, I work on items sometimes eight weeks ahead of time. And six weeks ahead, so that's just kind of a
In the meeting?
Sort of adulting sort of moment.
I thought that too.
But also, I, I think what the crunch is now with the Wednesday is because, you know, Christie or the other supervisor of the department head needs to review and make sure it's all buttoned up. We need to make sure, check, you know, have the workflow checked. Legal has reviewed this as deformed. Finance has checked these numbers because what slows us down in my observation isn't a lot of items on, on an agenda. It's underprepared items. That's, that's what slows us down.
Or things that have potential legal issues or further inquiry.
Right, that wasn't done.
I guess the Tuesday meeting could help in that regard, I would think.
Yeah, agree. So I, I'm, I'm in favor of the Monday because it provides more of that time for that necessary internal review. What do others think?
Christie, you said they only have two days to prepare for a meeting. It's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Monday.
Well, okay, so the meeting is tonight. So what they had mentioned was tomorrow and Thursday, they're going to be finishing, getting what was approved, pushed out and handled, and then start putting their next agenda items on. But yes, what I was trying to explain was if you know you have it coming down the pike, you can start getting it out there. They have access to peak, and I'm not bashing anybody. But they have access to peak. They can start putting their agenda items together whenever they feel comfortable doing it. They can put stuff on meetings that are April, May, whatever they feel that it'll be ready by that point. So they can, they can get started earlier than, than that. It's but I'm just repeating the feelings of.
I guess one thought that I had after looking at this and listening to the comments during the management meeting specifically was for things that need legal review, but I, I think after thinking through Clerk Flintoff's statements, a couple of other people's statements, our attorney meetings normally on Tuesday morning, to give more context to my thought. I think it's still fine because if anyone does need an attorney to review something, they still have that option. They still can ask before it's the deadline. I, I think this is just more of a change. I don't think it's necessarily bad.
I think it also serves the public better because um, you know, the more notice about what's going to be on an agenda, the better
Absolutely.
participation. And, and it does include the same provision about inclusion being necessary. The distribution um is similar. Um, the correspondence and reports, I would say is similar. What's different about that is just kind of centralizing responsibility with kind of one person that the board designates to kind of organize. What's nice about the way the organization has developed is we have multiple people who write and create and present items so that we really have the experts. It's not just like we used to have of like one manager who wrote everything and that's all the board would see. You know, we have the various department heads producing things. Are there any further comments through four point four before we go to four point five?
Yes. Four point two, why are we moving the, uh, why, why do we use five o'clock as the posting time rather than closing business four? Just out of curiosity.
Um, just because that's the reality of how late most people, I mean, like, somebody in this position definitely works past four, is sometime attending to staff or the public until four, and doesn't have a minute to button it up until after four.
So that's not a type.
No.
Okay. Well, the
I'm grateful for the five o'clock.
Two lines up above the five o'clock, a little to the right, there's the word them, which I think should be then, T E H N.
Uh, with meaning back to the board and them post-publically should be them.
Thank you, David.
Oh, and four three. Specifically talks about resp- um, or uh, communication to the board in general. What about communicate? What do we, uh, should be we concerned with communication to individual?
So, yeah, if you, if we want to spell it out more here, we can. I will just say, you know, certainly, people are good. If, if John gets something of significance, he'll send it to me just as any other member does. So we, we do that. I think anything that is actually written to the board, or if something comes to me, but it's of interest to the whole board, um, it's included. So I just use discretion. But we can, is there a specific edit you'd like to see, David?
No, I was just asking about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else through four, four before we go to four or five, where there's?
Four, four, realistic, that people have to get written reports for a Tuesday meeting the Monday before. Does that happen now? Like the Planning Commission report, or the, the Gellman report, or the LPC or the PPP report, or the whatever report, Chris Chang's report, or Christie's report, or is, is that realistic? That's all.
If you look at the beginning of the second sentence, if practicable.
I know.
Because it's often not.
So then it'll just be added later.
Yeah, and I, I think that, you know, it's, it's, we, we want to have the most current information once we get to the board table, and sometimes that information, that record doesn't exist until after the deadline, and that will always be the case. What we, what we don't want to have is just an underprepared, say, action item. I'm less concerned with, you know, a report or a piece of correspondence or, you know, additional information being added than I am with an idea or a proposed action being underdeveloped.
Follow along with that, if I may. Last night was the Planning Commission uh meeting. Um, and today is the, the board meeting. So the report from the Planning Commission would then be in the next board meeting? Are we, are we talking about that?
I would, I would defer to who was ever responsible for it. If they can get it together for tonight, fantastic.
But it wouldn't be in the posted packet?
We can add it.
You could actually post it in both if you wanted to. Yeah.
Post it what?
You could post it in both agendas under reports. Like, when John was doing it, oftentimes he'd say, will you put this in the board packet? And the meeting would be tonight. And I could do that, but I think, David, you're thinking, you know, we, I could also put it in the next agenda as well as the current agenda.
I'm just trying to think of the time, because Planning Commission is over.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If it wasn't prepared, it can go on the next agenda.
So, so are we suggesting that all reports have to be in writing?
That is not what's proposed here. Would you like to suggest that?
No, I would not. So so when I gave the Planning Commission report today, that content is going to be in the meeting minutes, I expect.
Correct.
No, it is, if there are.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I think, you know, what, what we, you know, the discipline that we are pretty good about having and, and getting, getting back on track is is once we publish a proposed agenda, and I would say we could rename it as proposed, that there's one public proposed agenda. So the items don't change. We might add an attachment because new correspondence came in or a new report or something. But then if we get to the board table, that's when we would make any additions or changes to the agenda. The proposed agenda.
Speaking as a prior resident, um, the worst thing we can do is hand out things at the board table and not include the people in the audience. That's not kosher.
Right, so then that step of the process is Wednesday morning, I take everything that's handed out and then upload it to a revised packet. But I appreciate, you know, people don't have it instantly available. I've just, I, I just think, you know, some of that's just going to happen. You know, members of the public handle stuff all the time. Okay, and then if we could look at four point five, um, order of business. And this is order of business for regular meetings. This is for the proposed agenda. A new proposal under adoption of the agenda is um declaration of a conflict. We talked a lot about conflict of interest. City of Dexter does this. Where at the top of each meeting, it's a standing item. Where board members may declare any real or perceived conflicts related to items on the agenda. What do folks think about that?
Would we vote on it? Or would we just a declaration? Or would we vote on it when it comes down to the substantive matter?
We'd have to decide. I would imagine it would simply be a, a declaration at the time. We could do it. We could declare and approve abstentions at the time. I, we, I guess we could do either, John.
Thank you for all conscientious about recognizing that we have a potential conflict of interest with a conflict of interest. Why, why can't it be when the matter comes up substantively uh on it? Because something could be pulled or what, I don't know. I guess. I don't know. I, I, I think it's okay as we consider the matter when we're going to be talking about the matter, but you know, I can live with this. I just think it's better when it comes up organically during the discussion of, of the matter.
Okay. Great.
I, I like having it as a placeholder. It's reminder. And I might suggest that the abstention vote up or down could be with the agenda item, the specific item.
I do have one thing, and maybe I missed it, but introductions and recognitions. I found that to be good for getting things like when we recognize skip and when we have new hires and we introduce them, because otherwise they could be here quite a while uh for a guest or, or something. So, so it, is it, was that an oversight or is that something we're trying to drill away with, or if I just
So
miss it?
There's um, it, and it's indented inadvertently, but it says special topics. Um, I, I had suggested kind of a special order. The group liked the term special topics better than special order, but um, that is just like special topics is meant for anything special. Let's say Representative Lazinski is going to be here. Somebody else. Um, so that can be used at any time and, and can be placed anywhere on the agenda needed, John?
So now, we have introductions and recognitions or special topics before public comment, but you propose to move it after the first public comment.
So right now, introductions and recognitions isn't in our rules at all. It's just
It's been outstanding agenda thing, if any.
Yeah, it, right.
It's developments.
It, it has, and it's, I, I would say what one concern I have about it is it's developed into kind of a lot of things. And I think that some of the things shouldn't happen before public comment. Some of, like when it's a whole presentation. That, which right, certainly if there's an introduction of somebody who doesn't have the time to be here. I appreciate we want to recognize new employees. We want to honor current employees, but that's also something we're happy to take time to do, you know, under.
Okay, I just, I just think that introductions, like when we're introducing a new hire that we're going to hire and when we're
Okay.
someone recognition for retirement or a special award, or I, I think it's nice to do it
See.
before public comment when a lot of the public's here and you can kind of see it and participate. That's just my
Okay.
Sometimes they do, it's a hot topic.
So we could move that above public comment and just, we would all be disciplined to make sure it's kind of non-substantive. Yeah, yeah.
Sneaking stuff in.
Okay. Oh, I di- I didn't mean to look over this. The opening of the meeting, we did flag for the board that the pledge is something we've not talked about. Um, it's not in our rules one way or another. It's something that when I started on the board, um, we did, I think, four of the seven members said the pledge, three didn't. When we um went all Zoom, um, we were not coordinated enough to say the pledge at the same time it fell off. It came back on. Um, I think it's a nice um way to open the meeting. I just want to flag, there's also additional ideas about how to open the meeting. Um, so I did want to um spend some time um and get board member input on the opening of the meeting. Do we want to do the pledge? Do we not want to do the pledge? Do we want to do a different type of opening? What are your thoughts? I mean, we all take an oath. Which is different than the pledge.
I think when I was on the board. Going to say this. I shouldn't. Anyway, this was new to me to have to say the pledge. We didn't do it for a long, long time. Personally, I don't see the need for it, but if the board feels it's, should, we should continue it, that's uh more power. I mean, that's fine, but personally, I don't feel the need for it.
I like doing something that reminds us of why we're here and what our job says, job is. I, I, I think the pledge suffices. I would also think there's probably other things that might be a little better, um, more appropriate, but I haven't, you know, identified it.
I mean, I've seen other municipalities locally and across the state do it. I, I I think it's appropriate. I, I
Okay, we should just add it to our rules then so that we do, in fact, do it at every meeting if we're going to do it.
I would agree.
Because it is awkward to do it sometimes, and I, I think gives an impression we don't intend to give.
Yep.
Would this then hold for all committees and commissions as well as the board?
No, these rules just apply to the board. Um, you'll also see Mariah did a nice job of giving some description of what each item might mean. Other comments about the order of the agenda or the remainder of four point five? Late arriving items are discouraged, inevitable, allowable, will always happen occasionally, but discouraged. Four point six, adoption of the proposed agenda. Same practice we have now, just a little more clear.
Very reason we used the word demands, if any board member demands to remove items.
Yeah, that was my idea because yeah, and I, I'll tell you why, because it's different. We have always allowed somebody to pull something from consent without a majority vote. And if you don't say the word demand, if you say ask, then you're asking for a vote. So if we're going to empower each other to demand that anything can come off consent, um, we, we will do that now, but I have seen without such clear language, I've seen this board do two different things. Sometimes requiring a vote to pull it off consent. So we really need to make a decision. Do we want to require a majority vote? Let's say, you know, Jessica wants to move an item off consent. Is a board vote required to move it off? Is a board vote required to move it off consent? Or can I just ask, demand that it be off consent and it's off consent regardless of the full motion to adopt the agenda?
Okay, very fair.
People, I think people put things on the consent agenda strategically. So they wanted to just
There's only one person who orders the agenda. There's one, right now it's the supervisor and administrator and it'd be the
People put things where it goes.
But that, it's all proposed. So it, the way that it works is the person preparing the agenda currently, the supervisor and administrator is the, I mean, certainly department heads submit and place it somewhere, but you move it around to Christie does.
Sometimes they'll ask, where do you think this should go?
Christie decides. Gillian decides.
I worry that things are going to be put out of consent and we can't get it off unless we say you have a more majority to get it off. That's a done deal. Am I missing?
Actually
What Jessica's proposing, if I understand it, is that any one of us could say, pick an item L 27, and we don't like it and we request, we demand.
Or there's, there's no vote is what demand means.
You know, we state that we want L 27 off consent.
Board member went into peak and said, hey, I don't put that on consent. I want, I think we, I have issues. We just let, let, talk about it beforehand and we'll move it to
Yeah, and you have to trust the person preparing the agenda, but, but it's not department head level about where things are at here. It's not the submitters. It's, it's the person finalizing and publishing it to the website decides on the order and where things are.
Do we think there has been abuse or waste of time with people pulling things from consent unnecessarily? Does there need to be a tightening of the rule?
I, I think that people have necessarily pulled things from consent because they're underprepared. And I say that as clerk and oftentimes it's because if we don't have the correct motion, then we're not going to be able to pay the bill or sign the contract. So like that precision matters.
Yes.
So things have to be fully baked to be on consent. I think there's been, uh, could be more internal review of the items and what's on consent.
I, I spent considerable time on a previous agenda with a number of different general ledger items. It was done before the board meetings. So that kind of time we got to the board meeting, all of the expenditures were, one budgeted, two coming out of correct GLs and three that the motions read as sentences. They were
Typos, all of them.
Pretty good, but there was some cleanup that needed to be done and validated.
And, and frankly, you know, I mean, I used to do that a lot, you know, until the, the board dynamic of the prior board. You know, I, that's why I think that, you know, we need to welcome collaboration and helping each other and trying to make items as ready as possible to make our meetings efficient.
But it's, um, it's okay for a board member to email the author of the motion before the meeting and say, I don't understand. Can you explain it?
Of course.
It's preferred, it's preferred by me.
Yep.
Yeah, I, it's encouraged actually.
To keep the things from not being pulled for one simple little question.
And that's why there are names on items because that's the person responsible for knowing.
So that also if somebody reads the consent agenda and they, they have a question, they ask the person rather than pulling it off. Very good.
So, I mean, I like the word request rather than demand. And one way you might be able to do it, if any board member requests to remove a consent agenda item, or consent item, comma, provided another board member joins in their request. Or in other words, you could, you, you need like, like you need at least two people to pull something rather than one person pulling. There needs to be, rather than a majority, I don't know.
Yeah, I see where you're going. I will say, I think some of the history here, and I have Trusty Noel's voice in my head right now. Um, I can't say what she'd say if she were here, but I would guess she would say, um, it's always been that anybody can pull from the consent agenda. And, and I'll say too, David and the 2019 board, we didn't use the consent agenda very much. And, and I know Chris Green made some good points too, saying, you know, if we're going to use it, we need to all have the latitude to have the discussion if we want to.
Single person, one person.
No, I know, I appreciate that, but it, but if it's between one person and a majority, then perhaps we could do one. Is that what we're kind of at? We're kind of batting around whether one can pull or whether you need a majority to pull?
I feel like it should be one person. That, that's just me. I don't know. Others feel like it should be more than one?
I think that's reasonable.
I, I'm fine with one.
Yeah.
Yeah. My apologies for
No, John, you raised good points. It's, it's that, I get it.
So we're going to leave the word demands?
Mariah, if Mariah has any other suggestions besides the word demand, could you suggest them to us offline?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I liked it. I liked it because I think that's what you're doing. You're saying, you're saying move this.
Yeah, because the request created the question and I've seen us handle it.
Okay.
But, but the next phrase or the sentence, the supervisor will, maybe we can change that to shall, determine where on the agenda to move the item. I mean, it's so it, it's very clear there. If someone requests to move an item, the supervisor will move it to another part of the agenda.
But where specifically is what the supervisor does? Not that it is moved off consent. That's not discretionary. Where is the discretion of the supervisor? Which is what we do now?
Demands it is, I guess. Okay, demands.
Time limit on meetings. It is the same rules as we had. Um, we did two things. We made it from 11 o'clock, which is four hours after our 7:00 PM start to three hours. And we made it generic for three hours because I will note, nowhere in our rules do we have the day or time of our regular meetings, nor should we. That is set in the regular schedule, rule two. So these rules should be flexible so that if we ever decide to say, start our meetings at 6:00 PM, they would conform.
This tells me that we're going to try to, or going to endeavor to generally be done with, with agenda items. Uh, or substantive agenda items or, you know, new business or whatever by 10 o'clock. Am I, am I right on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, any matter on the agenda, I'm wondering if it could be any business item or any new business, because after that we have public comment, which we have traditionally accommodated even after that. So I'm wondering, it says any, is it, is public comment an agenda item?
Yeah. So John, um, the, what this states, and maybe we need to word it more clearly. It's any matter that is next on the agenda. So whether it's a discussion item, whether it's under unfinished business or new business. So that, that's the intention, but I appreciate this language isn't that clear. But we say, we state that we're going to move right to public comment is what we're trying to say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And maybe we should just state that more clearly, Mariah.
Yeah. I mean, the way I reconsider any matter is things that you're actually deliberating about and deciding.
I, I agree. That's what we mean, but that's not what the nomenclature says yet.
Yeah, I agree with John. If we could make the language more clear. We've all had the same understanding of this rule, but we need to make the language more clear.
If I may, after the words of public comment, add the phrase at the next board meeting. So you're going to move, consider the matter on the agenda, except public comment, at the next board meeting, if the matter is not yet under consideration.
I mean, it says that matters on the agenda not yet acted upon at the time of adjournment will be placed at the top of the agenda headings of the next regular meeting.
Well, okay, I was
Yeah. So we have next regular meeting. I wonder, and, and we don't, we, we did that because at one point in time, not this board, but a prior board, this rule was being abused and the meetings were just ending before getting to an item and then again and again. So this requires that if we adjourn a meeting and there's something we didn't do, it goes right up to the top of the next regular meeting.
My, my final note is may move the proposition. You need to add the word proposition or can you just may move at the township board? You need what, what does the proposition add to that?
Yeah, that's nothing. Let's strike it.
Justice that.
Yeah. Yep, these are good edits. Special meetings? Comments? This would, um, make clear that there are two public comment periods for special meetings instead of the one. Rule five and 5.1 chairperson. Um, the committee had a question. We didn't spend much time talking about this and I'm trying to recall Kathleen and Mariah and Christie, the conduct of meetings. I think this was something, um, Gillian wanted to speak about. I mean, I want to put a pin in it, but if I recall correctly, I think she wanted to, um, talk about additional rules related to, um, wasn't it about the order of speaking or the number of times speaking? So this was kind of a placeholder for a this one here.
That was further down.
The conduct of meetings.
Yeah, permission is
Permission is being directed.
So is this one floating in two places, Mariah? So it's in 5.0?
Oh, I don't have anything in 5.0.
Yeah, and above it, 5.0.
I don't, yeah, so 5.0 is the heading for the paragraphs of the
Oh, that's the name of it. Okay, sorry. My bad. Cancel clear. Okay. Any comments on 5.1 through 5.5?
I'm concerned about 5.2.
Okay.
We've never ever had the need to have permission to speak. And I, I know at the previous administration, some folks, some board members wanted to continue talking and the supervisor refused to let them. And I think that's inappropriate. This is a deliberative board. And if we have, if we should be able to build issues. And if I speak once and I want to speak again, I should be allowed to. Because I might disagree with Kathleen and we have to duke it out here at the table. It's not, you know, you can't just shut, shut down conversation because I've already spoken once or twice.
So are you questioning 5.2 or 5.4?
Well, kind of both. Well, 5.4 is not so bad. I mean, everybody should have a chance to speak. So if John speaks and then I speak and then you speak and then I speak again, that's not right.
That's what that's
Yeah, that's what this is. I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with 5.2.
I have a problem with 5.2.
Well, I, go ahead, John.
Should it say shall be recognized? I mean, like, we all can't speak at once and somebody has to call it. So how about rather than the approval, how about shall be recognized by the chair?
Yeah. And I, and I would just say this is, this is the 2022 rules of order. I would, I agree with everything people say. I, I like that softened language. It does have the same meaning though, David. So do you have a problem with the meaning or the way it's written?
I have a problem with needing permission to speak at the board table.
And John, your suggested language? Recognized?
Shall first be recognized because we all can't, we're all going to get to speak, but you know, it's like one at a time and then
I think that's fair.
Although let, let me give an example of how this has worked. I mean, we're all here tonight and we've been able to listen to everybody say what they have to say and wait till someone takes a break and, uh, add our opinions. So in some way I, I see the problem with it and I see how, you know, I, I understand right now we're having a much calmer conversation. Sometimes we do, uh, especially as things come up, but I'm not sure it's entirely necessary.
Well, I think the, I think it's important to have something, um, that that makes clear about the chair's role, um, to recognize. I, I think the way this is written suggests that it's one by one by one versus, you know, just the chair needs to keep control of the meeting, keep things moving forward. Certainly if there's space for the board to have discussion as we're having now, that's what's, that's what's happening right now, right?
I, I, I would like to address this. I, I think having to ask permission to speak is potentially an abusive situation. That you're not recognized even though you have had your hand up.
True. I, I will state, I want to be clear, nothing says people have to request. Now, I agree the obtain approval suggests there's a request and I have been, you know, um, I, I understand the dynamic you're talking about. Well, let, let's go ahead.
Add one thing here. Board members wishing to speak shall obtain approval of the chair. The chair should not, um, cannot deny permission.
Right, add a sentence.
Yeah, add a sentence. It's that they can't arbitrarily deny permission for, for a board member to speak.
Yeah, maybe just add a sentence to like fend off the worst case scenario.
Shall first be recognized by the chair. I think the chair is going to eventually recognize everybody, um, who he or she calls first is within the province of the chair.
Agree. But I also think it would be helpful just based on past experiences that the, the chair shall not.
And here's where we come to the lineality because it's my understanding, if you call the question, that stops debate right there.
Correct.
Yes.
And there's nothing you can do about it. Except, except
Vote against it.
Yeah.
Correct.
Unfortunately, that's been a
Which is a good thing. That, that controls because then it puts the power in the majority and not a single person.
True.
Okay. Good ideas on those. Um, disruption of meetings is the same public comment. Um, we just enhanced it. Any comments on 7.1 through 7.3?
Attendance or remote participation will be available for all township board meetings. Don't we want to make it for all township meetings?
These rules apply only to the board of trustees. Um, the board of trustees adopted a policy encouraging, but we don't have the legal authority to require it. It's okay. But this is just for the board of trustees right now. Any other comments on 7.1 through 7.3?
7.2, three versus five. I get, we're going to let residents have more to say, but, but this timekeeper, we haven't designated a timekeeper this year and I don't anticipate that we will. How do we ensure compliance with a five minute?
The moderator may. It's permissive. So I would imagine that if we're going over five minutes.
It's not we, it's a speaker goes six minutes. What do we do about it if we have him set at a clock? Or seven.
That's on the moderator.
One time a guy came and he spoke for 10 minutes and I tried to cut him off.
That's on the moderator.
Or 13 minutes, I think, but
It's on the moderator.
Yeah, that's ultimately the moderator.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, um, going on to 8.0, uh, public hearing makes, kind of aligns with our public comment?
That is not applicable to the applicant, presumably.
We had a good conversation about that. Members of the public are members of the public. Um, that is not the applicant. The Kathleen, do you want to speak to this? This is your area of expertise is efficient presentations by applicants.
Yes, did we add that though? So what I suggested, folks, was that we have guidelines for public comment. We don't have guidelines for presentations.
Right.
Which can go on longer than even the applicant has committed to. I've seen that it'll take 20 minutes, 15 minutes later, they're still talking.
So I think with that, when we talked about it, if I recall, that's again, uh, agenda item preparation. So let's say that somebody's preparing a PUD presentation. The person responsible, Laura Kreps, Kristi Aitken, whoever it is, needs to have talked to the applicant. The person responsible, Laura Kreps, Kristi Aiken, whoever it is, needs to have talked to the applicant, make a plan with the supervisor, the facilitator of the meeting, to say, we don't want a presentation, or we want a five-minute presentation, or the board's going to do questions and let you know if we need information. So I think it's just goes back to preparing the item and the presentation.
All the applicants usually submitting something in writing. What I don't like is when they submit something in writing, and then they go over it page by page, to your Catholic means. Boy, this goes on in terms of the. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I, it, to the extent that trustee Brent is trying to suggest a rule that says that applicants shall provide a written, whatever it is, and, and shall give a short summary of their presentation. I mean, I would be in support for something that kind of gives them more direction on tightening it up, but, uh, you know, we've got.
We could give some guidance there under four point five or under items. I, maybe we can put a pin in that, because I think you raise a good point. I think it should go in rule four somewhere.
We could say, could, could we say something that, under no circumstances can a presentation go more than 15 minutes?
I don't think we should.
Okay.
I, yeah, I can see, for example, Eagle being one of those.
Yeah, or auditor.
Or auditor.
I mean, there's.
Or the budget, so.
Yeah, okay.
So, and again, remember, public hearings are not just for developments. It can be public hearing on the budget, on an SAD, on any matter of public interest. Okay, rule nine? Is this basically the same?
Rule nine, I, I don't think says, it says shall include a minimum of actions of the board with respect to motions. Doesn't say anything about public comment.
So we kept it lean. Mariah helped us do a very good job, and this, this section was pretty tight before, of keeping it to the minimum that needs to be in there. If the board wants to include more minimums, you all know I prefer long four minutes, because I think they're valuable, especially when things get challenged or we need to reference them. Would you like to require certain elements in the minutes and not leave it to the clerk?
I, well, when I was doing the minutes, I always tried to almost do verbatim what people said. So I, I think it's important to put.
Okay.
I mean, but it's in, it's recorded, both video, video and audio is posted, so it's not like it's not available.
Right, but having it written.
But that.
I'll work, I'll work on some proposed language there for more detail, David, without being overly burdensome.
I like what we have today, the, the woman's name, Cheryl. She does a synopsis of everyone's comments.
Yeah. Okay.
I guess I did. I didn't do it. I, I did synopsis.
So I'll work on some language there. Um, rule 10?
Can I add something about nine dot one?
Please.
It doesn't say, and maybe it's somewhere else, but should we say something like motions and resolutions expanding township on Shelby by roll call vote? We always do that.
So we, we have that in another section, John, uh, 11.5?
Got it.
Hey, any comments on 10?
Uh, wait, go back to nine two?
Yep.
Make a suggestion.
Please.
The, uh, end of the first or in the middle of the first sentence, it says, uh, uh, recording of each entire meeting of the board, if it exists. I'd suggest maybe the it be replaced with such recording, if such recording exists.
Okay.
It, what does it refer to?
Great.
Okay.
Rule 10? Uh, 10.1, we thought was important to make plain that it's the option of the board. You can discuss an item before or after a motion is stated. We don't have to have a motion on the table to discuss an item.
That's helpful.
Okay. Any other comments on 10.2, 10.3? 10.3? You all want to review what these mean? Is everyone clear on what these seven things mean?
10.2, you, you know, each written motion for a resolution shall be read by the clerk before it's debated. I, I, sometimes it's simple, but sometimes there's a motion and amendments and friendly amendments and somebody added this, so maybe we add upon request, or, uh, it's usually not needed, because we know what it is, but sometimes it gets a little convoluted. It, it, sometimes we'll spend half an hour on motions and friendly amendments and things like that, and it's like, now, where are we again? So.
Right. So this, this would require that the supervisor or the supervisor's request, the clerk, read every motion or resolution prior to adoption.
And some of those motions are two pages long.
Right. Now, I would ask the board, we often say model motion, because it's printed, and maybe we should note that. That might be a scenario where we don't read it, because it's printed. I don't know.
I would.
I think there is some value in reading it aloud. Not every member of the public is.
Purvey.
They, it's accessible, but they may not be looking at it.
But when you say read it, you mean more than just say, I moved the motion to.
Like the whereas and all that stuff?
All the whereases and whereases and whereases?
That is part of the resolution. It's been in our rules for three years. We can take it out if you wish.
Understand, okay. I would say if a board member requests it to be read and to be read into, because what you're saying is it should be read into.
Requested or demanded? No, I mean it.
It matters.
I know, I know. Oh, no, okay.
And I, I agree. I'm with David. I don't think things that are in the packet that are, are part of the, you know, they have the packet that's been out for a week, that they have to be read. My, my concern is when things get amended on the fly, eh, that they, that, that a motion or resolution be read if requested. Or an amended motion or resolution.
Then shall we strike the first sentence and just rely on the second sentence that says all motions and resolutions may be required to be in writing and/or read aloud upon the demand of any member? So then, we, we don't have to always do it, but everyone has the right to demand it.
I think that would be.
Okay. So then we'd strike the first sentence.
Good.
Okay. 10.3, any questions? We simplified this and added some explanation.
Postponed to a certain time. Not a certain date.
I think time means date and time. Is that true, Mariah?
Yes, but I, but I understand what trustee Reed is saying. It could be more clear.
Okay.
Time or date?
Time, yeah, time.
Usually it's date. I mean, like, well, let's do this in an hour and a half.
Yeah, that, that's what I, that's what I'm thinking. That means.
Date.
Like, put it at the end of the meeting, but.
Postponed to a future date?
A certain date, yeah.
Certain date.
Yeah.
Which will presumably be in the future.
Postponed to yesterday.
Okay, um, 10.5, 10.4 and 10.5. 10.4, simply defining which are non-debatable for reasons that are clear. Um, 10.5, rules on procedural motions lightly edited. We thought these all made sense. Any other comments on rule 10 before we get into rule 11? Is probably the last remaining beefy item we have to talk about. Voting. Votes required, obligation to vote is, is the same um, with the, you know, proposed addition at the top of the agenda, the declaration. And then we wanted to include some language around conflict of interest um, and just had kind of, Mariah gave a good first pass at it. Um, but we want to better define conflicts of interest, not constrain people too much, because at the end of the day, everybody has different kind of sensibilities around our own personal ethics and what's a real or perceived conflict, but we also need some definitions, so the public has some assurance that we're considering some of the same elements. So what are folks' thoughts about 11, two, three, and four?
I think 11, four, the definitions, I think, is very makes it very clear.
I have to give credit to Kim Moore. 11, four is an adaptation of something that she brought to the landing commission.
Oh, thank you, Kim.
Thanks, Kim.
And Mariah, can you tell us how 11, three and 11, four relate?
Uh, 11, three is just a more general, uh, definition. 11, uh, 11, three is, is more actually how I think of a conflict of interest.
Me, too.
Um, and 11, four is, is more specific, because there, it seems there have been a lot of questions about different scenarios. I don't know that they won't need to stay in there, although I don't think they conflict with each other, so they could.
And I do like on 11, four, the second, I wonder if we might even start, we could strike the first sentence of 11, four and start with the second sentence. I like that it, the second sentence of 11, four gives like a laundry list of possibilities.
Sure.
Well, yeah.
Such a conflict could include but is not limited to?
Strike the first.
Think of the one that exists.
I would, I would suggest that.
Think that would be proper.
Because 11, and you could even combine the two. 11, three is really the rule, and 11, four is a description.
Yeah, like, examples, or, like, would be conflict of interest, you know, general rule or rule or conflict of interest examples or factors or whatever.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah. 11, five, roll call vote to John's, um, point. Um, and again, it is when any member demands.
But.
You don't have to vote. Um, anybody can say roll call vote, and it's a roll call vote.
I don't like that it says routinely uses roll call vote for financial expenditures. I think if it's a financial expenditure, it should be, and, and maybe I, you know.
And can I ask you why? Because the board's been so fuzzy on this over the year. I always go along, because we'll like doing it, other people like doing it. But sincerely, why is it important to you, John, as a policymaker?
I guess I know that some things, if expenditures over a certain amount in some municipalities, and maybe that's not as, it needs a super majority vote or versus just a majority vote. So sometimes, uh, and, and we might not have that. So it's to differentiate whether you had a two-thirds majority or simple majority or, uh, three-quarters majority, or whatever the statute or ordinance or policy requires.
And we have that in 11, one. 11, one sets forth anything, if we have any statute, we could include there if we had any policy. Let's imagine that we revised our procurement policy, John, and stated in our procurement policy that we're going to require a super majority for certain expenditures.
I'm okay not having it. I just, I was just trying to be pompous, in case there's some ordinance or statutory requirement that a cer, super majority is needed for a certain.
There is not.
Okay.
And so that's part of why I have found it not meaningful when we do it, because we're not doing it for any particular reason, and we're doing it for all dollar amounts. I would suggest if we could add an 11, one, maybe if people would be comfortable by these rules, um, other board policy, other, other township policy or statute. Like, if we have in these rules or another township policy, let's say we have in a personnel policies, there's a super majority of the board. And then with that, could we strike that? Routinely uses roll call votes? Yeah.
Can you repeat what you're adding to the one?
You're adding 11, five?
11, one?
11, one. Also add policy and, and.
Or township policy?
Policy or statute.
And then that allows for us to say that if we want to update our procurement policy to require this, we could require this of ourselves. And then, um, I would suggest striking that last sentence with the footnote. I know Gillian may have a, a different thought on this, so we'll check in with her about it. The financial expenditures, you don't think so? Okay. I just, there's nothing that says we have to do it. And so if there's something we can simplify, I think we should.
Okay, um.
11, six?
Yep, I still rotate order.
Well.
Yep.
It says, so that no member votes first or last on every roll call vote. Now, does the order rotate on every roll call vote, or just per meeting, per day?
Just per meeting.
Okay.
Actually, per day. Let's be more specific. So it's, if we have, actually, it's per meeting. Per meeting is how I do it. If we have back-to-back meetings, I've probably screwed up and let somebody vote first for the special meeting and the regular meeting.
Yeah, that sounds.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, but we'll do it by meeting, but good point.
Shall rotate the order of voting in each meeting period.
Boom. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the, 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 it was trying to get to the purpose, but I think it's clear. That's good.
It was always breakfast, that the supervisor always voted last, but I always thought that was kind of.
Yeah.
Sketchy.
Yeah, I think calling for a recess to confer with each other in the middle of a roll call vote, that was where this rule came from for me. Okay. Any other comments, um, through rule 13? Well, we, we made, um, a lot of progress, given the feedback we've heard. Um, what is the kind of, I, I don't feel like this needs to go back to committee or for a whole lot of work. I wonder if the board would be comfortable with Mariah, um, maybe me, Kathleen, Gillian taking one more look at it and bringing it back to the board for approval?
These are final modifications. I'm fine with you just making adjustments and bringing it back for our approval for the next meeting.
Okay. Would, would somebody like to make, um, a motion with that direction, please, John?
That the township supervisor, clerk, attorney, and
Office coordinator?
Office coordinator, um, meet and incorporate the changes that we have discussed, uh, at this April 8th meeting for consideration at the next Sire Township regular BOT meeting.
Friendly amendment to take out the word to meet, because they.
To convene?
No, to confer.
Confer.
Very friendly, except.
Support.
Motion by riser, support by Reed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passed. Oh, there was a demand for a roll call vote. Reed, I'm taking you seriously to punish, I'm taking you seriously to punish you. Call the question. Reed?
Aye.
Riser?
Yes.
Gable?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brandt?
Yes.
Motion adopted. Again, five zero. Thank you for that, John. Uh, public comment. Is there any member of the public present who would like to speak? Good to see you, Alan. Anybody on Zoom?
Is there anybody out on Zoom that wants to speak at public comment? Please, for your Zoom cam? Currently, there are no cameras.
Seeing no public comment? Yes, a question from trustee Reed.
It's not that I have a issue with uh, either of the things, Jim or Mariah, but I'm curious. I'm, I'm wondering, do we as a board feel it necessary to have our attorney sit in our board meeting for every meeting? I, personally, I think it's a waste of their time and a waste of our money.
Our current practice is not that. I will say our current practice is, and we can revisit it, but so you're aware, is that if any member of the board has asked our attorney to be here, she or he is here.
So we asked her to be here tonight?
Yes, I did. I asked her to be here because of the Rules of Order item. Um, I will say Mariah and Jim do. I will say Mariah and Jim do an exceptionally diligent job of checking in with us to make sure they are in fact needed, but also make themselves available. But that is our practice. Certainly, we can revise it.
I, I didn't realize that they were here by invitation.
Yes.
Not like by custom.
No, no, not at all. It's not like the bad old days.
Okay. Clear to do only the audit or the budget, they would like to not come.
Yeah.
All right. Withdraw the question.
Is there a motion?
Nine, ten.
Okay. A motion by Yable, support by riser. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The meeting is adjourned at 9:10 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, committee, for all the work on the rules. Appreciate you being on those separate times and bringing this quality work.